So is there public comment first?
She said there's no public comment on the agenda.
Okay, so we're just going right into the workshop, correct?
Oh, it's just a workshop, just my presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a workshop. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Um, so tonight, we're gonna have the first look at the proposed budget that's being put forward by the superintendent with input from the staff and and we have another workshop scheduled for the first week in March. And it is our, I just want to remind everybody, I think everybody knows, but our responsibility to present our budget to the Board of Finance by mid, mid-March. And so tonight, really, we're gonna hear from the superintendent and then, you know, we can have discussion, questions from the board as we, as we move along. And we can discuss any next steps that we might want to take in preparation for the subsequent workshop that we're going to have, but no decisions will be made tonight. It's purely listening, learning, discussing.
Excellent.
Okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna hand it over to you, Dr. Youngberg, to get started.
I'm gonna share my screen. Hopefully, everybody can see my screen, and while I'm trying to get myself situated here, I have to shout out to Rita Parsiac because she's the reason why the budget book can be easily deciphered and why I'm able to have the presentation I'm about to to show you. All of my Cabinet and Leadership Team had a part in it, but Rita most especially. And you'll notice that Mr. Weathers is not on this Zoom because he's actually checking in with the Board of Finance, who has a meeting going on at the same time. So he said that he's going to give his little spiel, give them an update, and then join us, so he'll be on as well. So Rita, shouting out to you for all the work you have done on the finance side to produce the second, what I believe is a clear indication of how the district's been trying to manage its finances and support its students and staff. All right, so tonight's objective is actually, should be just objective. We changed the couple of things around, so there's one objective tonight, and that is to present the superintendent's recommended budget to the Board of Education members. By the way, I have to shout out to Laura Perez-Handler for all the beautiful pictures she uploaded to the presentation. They're also in the budget book, so they look great. Okay, before we move forward, I want to sort of recap where we were in 2019, 2020, because I think it helps to set, for people to remember where we are. Some of it is very painful, but we're gonna remember it anyway. But it also, it provides us with context moving forward. So if you remember last February, I presented, I had just been appointed as Acting Superintendent just a couple of months before, and I presented a 5.92% increase that was significantly lower than the 9.78% increase we would need to actually maintain the current staffing structure. So I was basically showing in last year's recommended budget all the places that we would need to reduce the staffing structure in order to be able to support paying everyone, you know, in the upcoming budget. So I presented that to the board. The board then voted to put forth to the Board of Finance the full ask, the 9.78% increase. They really wanted not, for us not to have to lay people off and reduce any more positions. Shortly thereafter, we were shut down by the state. The governor closed all schools on March 16th of 2020. In May, we learned of a 2.1% increase in our Alliance Funds, and we reduced what we were asking the board, what we were asking the town for, then went down to a 7.6% increase. Everyone's probably now, everyone is involved in the process, probably now thinking, oh, yeah, I remember this stuff. As I said, some of it's painful, but we're gonna relive it just for a minute. Then in June, the Board of Finance voted to approve a 1.3% increase, which is obviously a far, far away from the 7.6% we asked for, we asked for, or we needed. The Board of Education then notified the town that we would be applying for what's called the 2% set aside on the ECS funds, which is about 483,000, and we'll talk a little bit more about that moving forward in the presentation. This is a practice that's allowable in Alliance districts for when districts get into trouble, like we anticipated being in, given that we only got a 1.3% increase. We then worked, and Stephanie and Neil worked really hard at this, to try to take the 36 positions that ended up getting reduced and reduce the total number of humans being laid off. We actually only laid off two people. Through people retiring and leaving the district and open positions, we were able to plug in everyone else who was, whose position was reduced because we had such an inadequate budget. They only laid off two people, so really proud of the work that they did to make that happen. Our goal is always to reduce positions and not people, so we'll continue down the road. So that sort of recaps where we were in 1920. So it's important that you, that everyone remember this, because we know that what I presented to the Board of Finance, and last year I presented multiple times to the Board of Finance, remember it was our first go at virtual meetings? That whole idea of being on the screen with each other, we've become completely comfortable. Now we're, we're doing picture, you know, hats and mustaches and pig ears. But that was the beginning of us actually getting into this whole screen time. You know, we presented all the reasons why the town should have given us more than a 1.3% increase. I just, I want everyone to sort of be thinking about that when we move forward. Okay, so this year, fast forward to right, you know, this year, a couple of months ago, we started the school and department budget process. So we conducted all of our meetings virtually, similar to this format. We reviewed with each of the principals and the department leaders their current budgets, the current staffing structures. We asked everyone to think about what they would need to have post-COVID. So if, if next school year, 21, 22, had no more COVID restrictions, and we got all our kiddos back, what would you need to address their needs, whether those be physical needs, social, emotional needs, academic needs, all the above? What would you need in staffing and what would you need in materials? They basically gave us a wish list based on thinking carefully about how to support our kids. We then had Rita work her magic in the budget, all her budget charts, and she projected out, in order to give the principals and the department leaders what they believe their students need post-COVID, we would have a budget increase of 8.04% from the 2019, 2020 budget. Again, that's a very large increase. A little less than what we were originally asking for last year, but still a large increase. All of this information was then shared with the School Governance Councils. If we're talking about the school budgets, and they actually sign off that they were notified of the budgets. Some examples of the post-COVID requests that came from principals or department leaders. We restored building substitutes in all of our schools. Remember, that was one of the things that got cut. We know how important they are to have that go-to person in the class, in, in the buildings that they can pull in and move around as needed. We also are, are shifting away from some of the contracted services, the Delta T and the Kelly Substitute Services, and hiring our own district-wide substitutes for both certified and non-certified. It is a cost savings measure. I see Tracy clapping. Yay, it's a cost savings measure. And that, that's kudos to Stephanie and HR for figuring all that out and working on that. So we've introduced some district-wide subs. We heard requests for additional related services personnel, which should make sense, social workers, school psychologists, school counselors, BCBAs, which stands for Board Certified Behavioral Analysts, right? Is that right? Analysts? Yeah, okay, I thought so. It didn't sound right when I said it. We, we are continuing to try to make sure that Wyndham High School is adequately staffed. So Wyndham High School had a number of requests to fill some of those positions. Remember, our high school's now at 25 graduation, 25 credits to graduate. And we have three college and career pathways, so we need to make sure we have the staff that allows our kids to reach the 25 credit threshold and experience some of those amazing things they have going on in the new pathways. We requested some staffing be increased in the core program, and if you were on our, our last meeting with the Finance and Audit Committee, you know that that program has done an amazing job of supporting our kids who are, who need an alternative setting to succeed. So in many cases, they're under, undercredited, overage students who just need to be in a smaller environment. And we're seeing Suzanne Cross on the call. We're seeing some amazing things happen with that opportunity. So that's, you know, life-changing in, in terms of getting those kids what they need to graduate is, is an amazing opportunity. At the same time, it's also supporting the district's finances, because we're not, we're not sending them out elsewhere. We're providing for their needs in-house. So that's a kind of a neat thing. So obviously, we want to staff the core program for all those reasons. We saw requests for additional family liaisons. Family liaisons was one of the positions that last year's budget required us to reduce, because we couldn't afford to carry all of them, but we know in response to COVID, we're gonna need connections to families. We still have a number of kids who are regularly not showing up to our virtual learning environments. We need to find those kids and get them back to school as soon as we're able to do that. So we're definitely gonna need family liaisons. We heard from principals that they were really interested in technology upgrades, not only in their classrooms, like can, can their classrooms finally have new smart boards? But also for the staff members, can everyone have a new updated laptop or an updated monitor or a double monitor, and all those kinds of requests? And we know we need a new phone system. So these are just some of the post-COVID requests. Most of them are centered around being able to adequately support our students and their needs, whether those, again, be academic, social, emotional, or in some cases, just basic, you know, basic needs. Any questions so far? Okay, from there, from the, the giant wish list of things that they believe they needed, I had Rita work some scenarios. She took the 8.04% budget, and I asked her to figure out if we could reduce the request that we were gonna ask the town, because obviously, the town is going through the same exact situation the school system is going through. Everyone's experiencing COVID. So I asked her to come up with some scenarios that would reduce our request, and we were able to come up with a scenario that include, includes looking at things like our current surplus, the grant offsets, and Rita's really good at moving money around, so we don't lose a dollar. If we need to spend this grant by a certain date, we can offset and do the swap around between the general funds and the grants. It's all legal and legit. But doing that, as well as what is going to be anticipated, which are SR2 funds, and I'll talk a little bit more about, we were able to get the request to two, to two, a 2% increase, which is what we built the budget book on. Someone have a question? Okay, I thought I heard something. And one of the things we wanted to point out is, if we close out the year with a surplus, and it's, it's still early to give any indication of what that surplus might be, but the very first thing that we would do is to pay the town back on the 2% set aside for the ECS funds. It's about $483,000. So I just, I wanted to make everyone aware of that. So the budget book that you received is based on a 2% increase using some creative scenarios that Rita developed for us. This is just a reminder, most of you have already seen this information, the SR2 funds we learned of. The award after the State Department of Ed can take up to 10% of the total amount, be about $5.9 million for the district. It is money that can be used as early as the summer of 2021, this coming summer. We have until 2023 to spend the money down. All of the money has to be, we have to have a needs assessment and a formal plan that's based on these four priorities. Academic supports, learning loss, learning acceleration and recovery, family and community connections, school safety and social, emotional well-being, the whole student. And, and the school staff, they acknowledge that the staff has been through as much trauma as the students have. Remote learning staff development and the digital divide. They, we're specific in our webinar with the state that SR2 funds cannot be used to cover operating costs. So we know we absolutely have to produce, and we're in the process of it now, a pretty detailed plan about how we know what we need and how we plan to address what we need. But thinking about these SRF funds, because this is, you know, almost $6 million being infused into our budgets to, to respond to what our kids need, it puts us in a, in a much better position before we heard about these funds showing up. So when we're talking about SRF funds, that's what we're talking about. So from there, you all will recall, will recall that in last year's budget book, we were referring to this page, it's page 71, if you're looking at your document. We were referring to this page as the big buckets. These are all the big cost drivers. If you break the budget down into, into these big buckets, you can determine where all the money is going. So last year, the fiscal year '21, you'll see at the bottom of the page, the grand total is $48,599,744. The 2% increase takes us to $49,574,083. So what I want to do is go through the cost drivers and just talk the board through, so you understand where the, you know, where the money's going and why there may be differences between the two budgets. And by the way, if you remember last year, we weren't able to give you a comparison between years. We are now able to do that, and we'll be able to do that moving forward. So that's a really big deal, being able to say, hey, listen, we know that we're spending $500,000 less in this big bucket, because we've been keeping track since last year. So again, kudos to the Finance Department and Rita. Someone could put on one of those funny hats on Rita or something.
I was trying.
There you go. All right, so I just want to walk through, obviously, always salaries, certified first, and then non-certified is always the biggest cost driver in the district. So you'll notice that there's a slight increase in buck, big bucket number one, certified salaries. It, it accounts for the contractual obligations. You know, obviously, we enter into contracts with our employees, and if we say we're going to give them a raise, they get a raise. So we have to calculate that through. So some of it's contractual obligations. You'll also notice, if you look on page 103, some of the, some of the staffing requests might be calculated in this number. It's hard for us to give you a specific number of FTEs, the difference between the two years, because we do that whole grant offset constantly. So if we told you there's gonna be 15 new FTEs, it might not financially be 15 new FTEs coming out of the general budget, because we do the swap often. So we didn't specify, but I'm telling you, if you go to page 103, you will see, you can compare the FTEs. And I don't know, Rita, if you have anything to add to that, or did I explain that correctly?
Yeah, so I was comparing, if you compare the total FTEs year to year, we are.
You're on mute again. Something happened?
Oh, I don't know what happened. Because grants pays for a lot of our salaries, the total FTEs are in the back of the budget book, I think, both years, so you can see the difference.
So that, that'll give you an idea. Any questions on the big bucket number one, or should I just keep going?
Keep going.
Okay, thanks. Number two is non-certified staff. You'll notice there's about a 1.4 million and change, change. Again, there's some of this is contractual obligations. Some of this is also some of the staff members we mentioned. The substitutes would be non-certified personnel. We also, some of the, some of the pupil services personnel are not certified and would also be in this particular bucket. And again, employee benefits, which is big bucket three, most of that information is provided to us. It's not something that we calculate, it's something that we're told is what we need to budget for. That includes the health insurance, life insurance, FICA, severance and fringe benefits, unemployment, workman's, workman's comp. Anything else Rita, you want to mention about bucket three?
No.
Nope, good.
Doing good.
Thanks, Rita. All right, bucket four, you'll notice, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a question about that, the employee benefits. Um, I'm sorry, my, my dog was going crazy and distracted me for a second, but can you, is there an indication why it decreased that I didn't pick up when I was being distracted?
Sure. So in bucket three, I'm just looking at our, the bullets that we have. Looks like health insurance actually went up.
The decrease is due to the SRF funds, the grant offset, and the, you know, potential surplus that we have.
Okay, thank you. So it's figured into this particular scenario?
So even with health benefit costs increasing, it's still, it's, it's still okay where it is then, okay?
Right, in, in the narrative, I think we did that with, when we did the 8%, Tracy. So, but when we put it down to 2%, we took in the SRF funds, the grant offsets, and the surplus.
Got it.
Thank you.
We've done so many different scenarios, I, I don't have track of them. I'm glad you do, Rita. Okay, pupil transportation actually went down, and, oh, I skipped one, I skipped bucket four, contracted services. Contracted services also went down, and some of that is due to the fact that we have moved some of the employees out of contracts and have made them Wyndham Public School employees. It's cheaper to do in some cases, and we figured out all the places where it's cheaper to do, and we've moved them over, so we, we've seen a savings there. Pupil services is also a decrease, and, and that in bucket five has the transportation contract for M&amp;J actually went up, but we saved almost a quarter of a million dollars, because we budgeted for the St. Mary's, St. Joseph's transportation, and then the school suddenly closed, so that money isn't going anywhere. So we were able to, we have a, a decrease in spending for the following year, because they're not planning on reopening, and we verified that with Father Larry, just to make sure we weren't miscalculating. Bucket number six, liability insurance. That's actually a number that's provided to us by the town, so that's the town figure that we plugged in. Bucket number seven is communication. You'll see an increase. That is where we hope to purchase the new phone system for the district. We're desperately in need of one, so that's where that is, or at least the majority of that increase is, is from that. Bucket number eight went down. This in part, and if you were on the last call, the last meeting with the Finance and Audit Committee, you know that we've been able to save some money and add a district tuition, thanks to the core program, the alternative high school program we have going, and here's an example of it playing out in the numbers. It also looks like we have some added district placements. No, it's the same reduction line, got it? Okay, yep, it's all due to us doing our best to support our students' needs in-house and not send them out. Bucket number nine is other purchase services. And it looks like fair, fairly flat, the $5,000 difference or so. Pretty close. These are our facilities, contracts, and I, I'm not exactly sure what this means. Maybe you could fill me in, Rita. What is utilization of substitute services? Is that the, the portion of the sub-services we are still using?
No, that was where it was last year.
Oh.
So.
You flipped it around.
The, it, it is just facilities contracts.
Thank you, thank you. All right, number 10, supplies. Supplies went down slightly. We use the same figure from last year, but we have some savings in the central office budget, so we were able to offset the request in supplies to make sure our schools get what they need. Bucket 11, operations, maintenance, and buildings, slight increase there. Some of that increase is due to increases in electricity. We talked in the last meeting about how it costs us more to heat the buildings, because we have fewer humans in the classrooms. We have to actually turn the heat up higher to get to the same level of heat, which is like fascinating. We also have had an increase in cleaning materials, cleaning products, which will probably continue for quite some time. Bucket number 12 is textbooks, a slight increase there. Looking for some items to support post-COVID. 13 is equipment. This is a, there's a big increase in equipment, because we are going to work to fund our, to start the process of rebuilding our IT infrastructure. So there's gonna be a substantial amount of computer equipment that's purchased. And bucket 14 is miscellaneous, and I think this was one of the ones that Rita adjusted bucket 14 to make sure that it was properly coded. I think you felt like it wasn't in the right place before. There was some line not in the right place.
Yeah, it, it went up because of affiliations was never in, it was in supplies. So it went up a little bit because of professional affiliations, dues and fees.
Gotcha. So that, that sort of walked through the big cost drivers behind each of the, the big buckets in the executive summary. Obviously, in the, in the recommended budget book, you can go and look at each individual line, and there's glossaries to explain the programming, if you're not sure what something means, but they broken out, you know, the, the page that looks like this with the bazillion different lines, who can actually take you line by line through what every school, how every school is staffed. So if you have any questions, it's all there. I don't know if there's questions now. Trace, I see Tracy, then Mark?
Yeah, um, I am wondering, when students come back, hopefully next September, full-time, back to whatever normal will look like at that time, do we have anything put in this budget to deal with social, emotional needs, possibly hiring social workers? Getting students who may never have been in the class full-time re-acclimated as first graders or kindergarteners to being full-time students? Those kind of things that developmentally, they may not have achieved in this year of being wonky, for lack of a better term.
We actually opened up the positions now. We've, we've, are looking desperately to, to find social workers, counselors, and I know Miguel's on the call, he can talk, he may be able to talk more about it. We're already doing things to help make sure our staff is prepared to support the social, emotional learning of our kiddos, but we have already opened up positions, and this budget does support those positions. Miguel, do you have anything to add?
No, I think you said it nicely. We're actually thinking about that now. And so with Tracy's, you know, approvals, we, we posted those positions, and hoping to bring those people on earlier on, so that we can begin planning, not, not just for next year, but even for the summer. So fingers crossed.
Where do we find those figures in this budget? I looked it over online, and now I have it in front of me, a paper copy, because I picked it up this afternoon. Nothing seems to have gone up significantly. Most went down, and that's why I'm concerned. How many jobs do we have to cut to make this trade-off, that kind of thing? I want to make sure that we're not asking for not enough to handle this unusual year that we're gonna come into, even if we're fully in person.
So this, this budget does not require us to lay anyone off. It actually allows us to hire everyone the principals and department leaders have asked for.
Okay.
No, no position cuts if we're able to push this 2% increase across.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. It's a good question, though, based on last year.
Can I, can I jump in?
Yep, of course.
So if you just look at the certified from last year to this year, last year's budget had.
What page are you looking at, Rita?
The total pages on the back, pages of last year was 99 through 102, but on this year's budget, it's 102. You can see that the FTEs are increasing. I think we increased the FTEs about over 20 positions in total.
That sounds about right, given what I know, what's posted.
Yeah, that includes the, like you said, the social, emotional. And because this budget is just a general fund, you're not gonna see a big jump. We're using SRF funds for some of those positions and Project Aware funds. So grant funding is gonna be covering those positions.
And Tracy, you asked a really good question, because that's exactly one of the things the state has us focusing on, is how are we gonna get the kids and their families back to a place where, you know, they're able to actually meet their academic goals? Because it may have nothing to do with academics when we first get started. Some of the families are, you know, are in a bad way right now. They really need emotional supports. Mark?
Yeah, Tracy, the, I'm not concerned, but I'm, I am interested in the, the equipment jump. I, I understand the need to redo our IT, but that's a significant amount of money. So I'm wondering about the, if we've worked out the bidding process, so that we know we're getting a two or three bids for this type of money. If we've already worked on the, the request for, for bids, or how are we gonna go from spending 27 to spending 689? That's what I'm curious.
And Neil, are you able to speak specifically to this?
Um, yeah.
Welcome, by the way. Thank you for joining us.
Live from the Board of Finance.
That's right.
Okay, um, so, yeah, so this is specifically in response, or several things here, in depending which part is in, in this budget and the other funding. It's to support, increase, and upgrade of devices, and, and in general, just the upgrade of all our systems with IT.
Yeah, that, that I get, Neil. I'm, I'm talking about the process. So if I'm gonna go out and get 100 smart boards, I understand it's gonna cost me money, but I'm curious about the, the in-house process. Am I asking for bids for these 100 smart boards, that I'm gonna select among several bidders? Am I targeting a, a favorite vendor? How am I going to make sure?
Rita's raising her hand. Brendan can answer this too, but Rita's raising her hand.
I just wanted to say that, you know, if we use a state contract, we don't have to go out to bid on most of the, the items that are under $1,000 apiece. Like this, the smart boards might be higher, but if we use a, a state contract, that's part of the purchasing policy that we don't usually go out to bid. It's not gonna be over 20,000 an item, right? Am I correct, Neil?
Yeah, the, I don't think these items listed here are 20,000. If they are, we would go through the regular bidding process.
That's a lot of little items, if we're gonna go from 27,689,000. I just would like to see, make sure we're, we're I just would like to see, make sure we're, we're tracking where all of that, that's a huge jump, which I know we need, but I want to make sure we're, we're tracking how it's going.
Okay.
A couple of years ago, we joined a consortium too. And I know it was questioned a little bit in the financial investigation that was done. But, but we joined a consortium that allowed us to buy in bulk for less. So I don't know if that's still in effect or if we're still a part of that or not, but that was four or five years ago under Brendan O'Neill's request.
That's what I'm talking about with the state contract or consortium, you can call it either one. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because the, the vendors in there are all approved, that's why, correct?
Yeah. I made a note Mark, that we'll make sure that we have a very careful tracking of any expenditures that come out of that line.
I mean, because both Mark and Tracy and I have been thinking about, I mean, based on their comments and, and my conversations, I think we need to be aware of the concerns that were raised in the forensic analysis and, and just make sure that we're being very transparent and clear about how we're doing that. Making those acquisitions, which I believe 100%, regardless of how big a jump it is, we should be making. Because I think when we come back after COVID, we're going to be using technology in ways that we hadn't been using previously when everybody was in in-person learning. I just think it's opening up a whole new way of doing some things.
Absolutely. Just credit recovery alone, opportunities for credit recovery and independent work and mastery-based learning, it changes public education drastically, right? If I can, if I can potentially work at my own pace on something and earn credit similar to the way it's being done in all, in our alternative high school, it's a game changer, right? I don't need to necessarily sit through traditional class time if I'm able to master the coursework in, in a shorter amount of time. So it does, technology does have, is, can be a game changer. Any other questions on the big buckets? Any other questions on pieces of the budget book? Or information that was shared in the recommended budget? Wow, this was an easy one.
It seemed very clear when I read through it. And it's just improving and building on what you all did last year to present the budget. I think we have a pretty good formula here for how to, how to present a budget, which we didn't have a couple of years ago. And thanks to, to Rita and all the staff that put in the work to do this. Tracy?
Couple of things before, I know this is like workshop one, so I assume there'll be a couple iterations of this budget book before we actually are ready to submit to the town. What would be nice is on page 103, if there was a comparison between last year and this year. I have last year's budget book and I will pull it out. I didn't have a paper copy until today, I will pull it out. But for people's information that aren't a little weird like me and save last year's budget book to compare it, that might be a nice addition.
That's great feedback. We actually were, Rita and I were actually talking about that very thing before this meeting started, so great feedback Trace.
Probably page 102 also, just so people on the Board of Finance have that answer right at their fingertips. And it's not a reason for people in town and possibly people on the Board of Finance who just want to find a reason to nitpick our budget book to do so. And I think most of them are going to be in favor of it, but just to kind of cover our bases. But I do have to say that I've been doing this for a long time now, as we established the last meeting. This is one of the easiest to read budget books that I've ever gotten, whether it was our previous superintendents or Dr. Adamowski or before Dr. Adamowski. This was easily one of the easiest to read.
That's great, good to hear, thank you so much. Go ahead, Mark.
And, and I agree with Tracy about the comparison. We just got to make sure that we don't get lost in the fact that we didn't have as many staff because of COVID this year that we're going to need next year. So when we're doing the comparison, it doesn't look like a huge increase.
Sure.
An area, i- if it was shrunk because of the not being virtual. That's, that's everything I would worry about in that comparison, as long as we have that clear.
There might be a way to present the comparison with a note, with, with, with
An asterisk?
A narrative there that just, you know, makes people aware of that. Because I'm sure when we present this to the Board of Finance, that's going to be, you know, front and center.
Right.
Presentation about, you know, helping that, but, but for the public and the, and other people who would look at that page, I think you're absolutely right, Mark. We don't want them to read it and say, oh my gosh, they're, they're hiring all these people and are they crazy? You know, so I think we need to be really clear about why we need.
Crazy like a fox, we're going to take care of our kiddos.
Same thing would be true of that, that first slide you showed us with the, I think it was whatever page it was that had the staff that we laid off, that we only had to lay off two staff members. Right there. But again, we need to, you did that because you moved staff around and staff left, retired. So we need to make sure people understand that we, we got rid of, or we removed 30 positions. Only resulted in two staff members laid off. Because people are going to read that and say, she's only laid off two people, we gave her 1%.
Right.
What the heck did they need this money for? So again, we, we worked within the system, 30 people, 30 positions were left, but only two had to be laid off because of retirements and whatnot.
Right, and one of the things that's really sad about being in, being in the situation like this with the budget is a lot of people left, Neil can attest to this because he was dealing with it. And we were really sorry to see them go, but we didn't blame them at all because you, it's hard to stay someplace and know that your job is, the future of your job is uncertain. So we had a lot of people leave the district knowing that we were in the process of doing these cuts. So I appreciate that feedback.
One thing, one thing on that note then, because Mark raises this and I think it's a good point, you might want to rework the wording there. So that it says, you know, we make it clear that not we work, you know, we eliminate, you know. We eliminated 36 positions, period. And then it could be another bullet point through, you know, this situation created, created, you know, the climate where people actually decided not to come back. You know, and we lost some good people because of that, right?
Absolutely.
And then we reshuffled the positions, but it, it wasn't just like as simple as it, as it makes it look.
Okay, I, I, yeah, I agree with that. Agreed. One of the things, I got a piece of feedback from Katina. And she actually gave us the feedback last year and we thought we had fixed it in this year's book and discovered that we didn't. On this particular page, page 10 in the budget book that has the little people comparison.
Yeah.
Katina felt it really strongly, and I actually agree with her, that we should be showing a comparison of the poverty level at the state as compared to Wyndham because our district struggles significantly with the, the impact of poverty. And so we are in the process of, I think Neil grabbed the data this afternoon. And in the next book, when we put out the final book, we're going to have a comparison of poverty in there as well.
That's good.
Yeah, I thought it was really good feedback. What else you want me to think about?
One question, are we going to pay this little girl royalty at some point?
I know, right, we used her face so many times this year, right?
Wonder if we're going to pay her royalty.
Yeah, I have to go to, go around to the school and get her to give us her autograph.
Lynn? Yes? I just have a question on the revenue summary page. Everything is laid out so incredibly. The one thing that's not listed here, and I understand it's part of the pie on the next page, is the taxpayer portion. Would that not be a line item on that previous revenue summary page?
What, what page are you looking at?
I'm just not seeing it. I'm on page 18 and 19.
18 and 19? Oh, I see, you want an actual line on the chart that says taxpayer portion?
I, I just, you know, I, before I looked at page 19, I was looking at page 18 and I'm just wondering where that piece was. I don't know if it's not appropriate to put it on that page, but it would just seem that that would be the total revenue or the total monies.
Any reason why we couldn't do that Rita?
The, the, the reason I would have is it's revenue to the town, it's not revenue to the Board of Ed, but we can talk about putting it on there, but it's
Oh, okay, no, that's fine. I just, like I said, I was looking for that local line item for the taxpayer money. Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Do you think there's a, even given that explanation that Rita gave Paula, do you think there needs to be some more clarity between those two pages for the taxpayer?
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering if everybody's looking for the monies that we use. That that would be one local stream of, of money to the Board of Ed, but.
You bring up a good point. I mean, I think we could list it as the local share. If you, you know, I do see your point Paula.
Yeah.
I'm trying, I'm trying
Rita, whatever you think.
Medium between what Paula's saying and what you're saying Rita, that makes it more clear. Because the ultimate reader of this budget should be the person in town who's, who's trying to figure out whether they support us and whether we're being clear and as transparent as possible. And something that may not make sense from like, like, I understand what you're saying Rita, clearly, but we, I think there might be some way to clearly depict it.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's a good point Paula.
Yeah. And we know that was a big sticking point last year, trying to explain they weren't paying for all of our, the, the request of the town is a small portion of what we're actually, the school system is actually
Right, which that pie chart does show and that's well, well stated.
Okay. Figure out how to highlight that. Anything else I should be thinking about?
I want to know if board members have any, you know, guidance or comments regarding this budget other than the way it's presented? Is there something when we're coming back to talk about it or March, I think it's March 3rd? Is the next meeting budget workshop?
It is, it says March 4th, I want to check the date because Dr. Gomez showed me that there's actually a typo in our, in our book that we'll fix before the next one. It is March, it's actually March 3rd, another typo, there's two of them.
That's what, that's what I thought. So, so I think when we come back on March 3rd, if, if board members have things that they'd like to see, we should speak up now and, and, and/or let Dr. Youngberg and her team know
Right.
before the end of the month, you know, before, sometimes a week from now or something like that, so they have time.
Yeah, I think that makes sense because they might want to, they might want to digest the information that was shared tonight and then if, that you could get back to me in a week or so.
And maybe what we could do, because we're missing some board members tonight, we could send a note tomorrow to say that we want any like requests or feedback and you should put a deadline on it so that you have, your team has time to respond before the 3rd.
Do you want me to send the whole board the presentation for tonight, from tonight?
Yeah, that would be terrific, thank you. Tracy, Mark, Paula, you're all veterans. Mary, Jaime, you guys have anything you'd like to suggest to the Dr. Youngberg and her team in preparation for our next workshop?
Uh, no, this is Mary. No, everything looks very clear. And, you know, I, I always feel apprehensive about this because of the lack of support from the town. Despite our efforts for, to have transparent budgets, to work within impossible situations. And I just want to say, I don't think we should be begging for what we need. And there's no general accounting principle or fiscal recommendation that we should have to plead with the Board of Finance. So I would like to end that tradition and also not make parents subject to that. It's ridiculous, so.
Thank you, Mary. So seeing no other comments, I think that Dr. Youngberg, you and your team should feel really good about where, where you've, where you've put us in this discussion. And, and I take seriously what Tracy Lambert said earlier about this being the clearest presentation of a budget that she's seen to date. And I think it reflects all of the staff and that are, that have been working at the schools, at the school level and the SGA's and everybody else too. Not, not just the administrative staff and the finance office. This is some, a team effort and it really shows.
Thanks Lynn. And it was nice to have somebody who knew what she was talking about and where it was in the budget book. And last year you were brand new, so I'm not holding last year against you. But if we were in year two and you still had to ask Rita about every single line item?
I hear you. I still have to ask though, because there are some line items, I'm still, you know, it goes back and forth, but I hear what you're saying, absolutely.
11 years and there's still line items I have to ask about sometimes. But you know where it is and you know what you're talking about. And I can really appreciate that you've taken the time to become intimately involved in this process and know exactly what's going on as opposed to just delegating it out and not getting their feedback and not hearing what else is going on, which I think has happened in the past.
Got it.
And she knows what she doesn't know. And is not shy about asking it, so that's good too.
Equally important.
We're coming along as a team, we are, absolutely. I was saying, I was joking around, was it this morning Miguel, right? Someone made some comment about, well, remember long ago, I'm like, long ago, I've only been in this position for 15 months. How long could it be? Let's be realistic, seriously. Anyway.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to wrap it up then and we'll, you'll send out a, this presentation to the full board tomorrow.
Yep.
With a request that people, if people have questions and/or things that they'd like us to bring back for discussion at our workshop on the 3rd. That would be great.
Excellent. All right.
And are you going to send us the reworked pages?
I am, yeah, we're going to make those adjustments.
Okay, wonderful.
Mark's got on, I don't know. Yoko on the glasses?
Mark is wearing sunglasses. Now, isn't there a song, "I wear my sunglasses at night"?
There's a song, absolutely.
Okay, well.
Move, we adjourn.
Okay.
Now I can update my Google and get all these cool features.
Yeah.
Move, we adjourn at 7:50, do I get a second on that?
Second, second.
Okay.
Thanks everybody.
Meeting adjourned, thank you very much folks.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.